All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Recording in progress.
It is now approximately 6:05 PM, and the May 12th, 2025 City Council meeting will come to order. This evening's invocation is presented by Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Thank you, guys. Dear Heavenly Father, we just come before you this evening with humble hearts and weak spirit. We ask you for your guidance as we enter into the business of the city. Lord, we ask you to give us each discernment with as much knowledge as we have available as we make some decisions that will directly affect our each and every one of us in the city. Lord, I ask for your continued blessing over our town, and thank you for the staff that we have. Lord, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's all be just as good as the Bible in the United States of America, to do our love and for which we stand, my nation under God, in this world, with everything and justice for all.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott. Councilmember Todd Harper. Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Anders Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reekler.
Here.
City Attorney Nancy Meyer.
Here.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion. Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
I'm.
Okay. All right, seconded by Anders. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You are opposed.
I'm opposed. I'd like to remove item 13 from the agenda and move that to a work session.
Question, can we do that now or can we wait till we get to 13 and then make the motion?
It has to be addressed on the agenda.
Yeah, but we already moved the agenda.
No, not at the moment.
Well.
You haven't had a conversation about the agenda. Don't you want to post it?
No, it's, uh...
That's not the way it's ever been done in the past.
What's that?
I thought the bill was flat.
That's what I... I heard five yays and one nay, is what I heard.
You want to clarify the agenda. How does that look?
It will be by motion, which looks like at this point you wouldn't have an agreement because everyone else approved it. But you also still have a conversation about why you want to change it and then then have voting again.
Yes, we could do that. Can we open for discussion, council? Are you okay with that? All right.
Okay, so the reason it was brought to my attention, there's on page three, item B. We are not referencing our code, but giving the code enforcement officer pure discretion. I have an issue with this because we're not enforcing our code as it is. And secondly, it's just giving the code enforcement officer discretion to do as he pleases. And I think no matter what, our code should just be followed. I understand everyone went through some bad times with the hurricane, but it's time to clean up our city.
Councilmember Shirley, is it possible that we could amend this ordinance? Because it's still the first, we will be the first reading whenever we get to it. Or would you be open to that?
Absolutely, no.
Okay, all right, so that's my recommendation, is let's go ahead and move forward and leave this item on the agenda. Whenever we get to item 13, please make a motion to amend if you know what needs to be changed, and then we'll let the council decide whether we may or not.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yep.
All right, great. All right, so the agenda is approved. And now we are on to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. Any council members would like to respond to the citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach council comments at the end of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address and...
Hi, my name's Mark McIntyre. My address is 3040 Hades West Drive. I haven't been to one of these in quite a while because we've been busy recovering like most everybody else here, but I just wanted to stop by both of us and say what a great job we feel that the council, the city, Kyle, your staff. It's refreshing, especially when you start talking to people in other beach communities, what they're going through. And I just wanted to say to everybody, I think you all have done a great job. It's probably late in coming, but you come up here, you take care of all the business. And I know you all have your own issues to deal with, just like all the rest of us, and your time, your effort, and the result especially, and what your team has done up there. Anders has been incredible, so hats off to you all. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. McIntyre. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Next, we have a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with the monthly law enforcement report.
Good evening, Councilman. Sergeant Bullock with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the April 2025 monthly analysis report. I believe you should have already received a copy of the report. First thing I'd like to point out, there were incidents of burglary and also larceny that occurred in April of this month. And one of them was a jackhammer that was stolen out of the work truck. And the other one was kind of a crime of opportunity. Somebody had left their garage door open and personally pulled up and got into their garage in the intention of the vehicle to... Just a reminder to try to keep your vehicle safe, keep it locked, and keep your garage doors closed as you can. Our deputies are out there, as in our activity before on the third page. Often, they'll come and knock on your door in the middle of the night and say, hey, you know, your garage door's open. Try to remind you just to help you secure those valuables so no one steals and makes you out of it for a crime. So those are the two instances there. Now, in April, there were 14 people arrested, but there's 19 charged. So the folks that got arrested, some have multiple charges. And interesting little note on this is most of these were traffic-related crimes. Actually, I take that back. All of them were traffic-related crimes because the misdemeanors on the top for the possession of controlled substance, drug paraphernalia were a result of the traffic stops. So just a testament to our deputies that are going out there and conducting traffic in course and getting to other things and bigger issues and taking action on them. A lot of full-traffic around suspended licenses and under-registered vehicles. This is just cut through the city. All right, and we go to the third page. The vast majority of our activity were the traffic stops, traffic patrols, and then parking violations. All right, then on the final page, we did have two significant crashes that occurred in the city. Usually, if you just have a couple offender matters or something minor, they might not even hit the report because they're not considered a crash report. But these ones were unique. One of them is a subject had a medical distress while driving and crashed into one of the palm trees in the median and took out the palm tree completely. Did a number of damage and demolished the truck. So nothing, no fatalities or anything resulted in that. And thank goodness, no criminal charges developed as a result, you know, just a medical emergency. And then the second one involved a juvenile that was riding a bicycle and rode down into the middle of roadway and hit by a bar. And that child had significant injuries. So our main team came out and did an investigation on that, and I think there's still an open investigation also. But that child is, lots of her is going to recover and be fine. And then two wind citations were issued in the city of Bel Air Beach. The majority of these were just out here on 9th Street and then up on 24th Street, go forward, and were along the causeway. That's all I have for my report for the city. Any questions for me?
Sergeant, any questions? Mr. Baker?
Page three, transport prisoners. It says 12. You're not bringing prisoners in here, are you?
No. No, let's see, transport prisoner, prisoner transport? Yep, I see that. So every once in a while, we'll have somebody that might be walking through the city or, you know, riding their bike, or it could be a medical distress or something along that line. And a homeless person that could be walking through. What we'll do is we'll offer them a transport to get them over to a shelter, and that's why that triggers a transport at all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have a question concerning the homeless. I know it's unfortunate that they are in that situation. However, I noticed a post today in the Bel Air Beach group that several have been spotted in this area. Can you confirm that?
Well, we've had a several transfer calls. I guess that would be confirmation there. I do the deputy. Have you seen anybody lately? Deputy Lake has been working on night shifts, and that's a lot of times when we account for these folks. They might be bedded up for the night, they might be sleeping in the mangroves or under the bridge or even at the boat, but that's Miller Plus. But we haven't come across too many, but there have been a few that have floated around.
And if there's, if somebody in the city, they see someone that they know that they're obviously not doing so well, do they just call the regular non-emergency number and report that person?
Sure, they can call the non-emergency number and report. We can get out and talk to them, see if there's any services that we can offer or if they need a shelter or if there's might be something more, you know, mental health related or something along that line or substance related, we can always evaluate that time, too.
And just so I know, and I can pass this information along to anyone that's concerned, if they say, no, I don't want your help, is there anything else? Is that the end of the story?
As long as they're not committing crime, they write just like we do. We can't stop and detain them just because they appear to be homeless or anything along that line, but we can always offer service and try to have a conversation and see if they need any help.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you.
All right, now we are to the monthly code enforcement report. I don't see, I think it's, you're giving that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Sergeant Trump and another committee member will be scheduled to take it over tonight. As you can see, our code enforcement, just our number of stops and actions has increased the past couple of months, and Sergeant Trump has been taking more activity on the dead landscaping. So we've been focusing on the high grass, but we've also been going after front lawns that are pretty much mostly ground numbers dead. And if issued code violation notices, I try to give a lot of time because it is quite a lot of turnover to replace all the brownhouses in the yard. But we have issued notices and I'm following up on them. On the handful of houses, I have owners that are taking action on these. I have some meetings for follow-up. But the exciting thing in my mind is I'm transferring over the code enforcement into our iWork database. We have different modules in the iWork software, and we primarily got it for Work Order. But there's also another model that we don't use that was designed for storm work order, but I found a way that I could actually start reporting our code enforcement through that. So I've been building up a different, Sergeant Trump.
Are you saying you're a hacker?
I feel like this is going to allow us all to compile our code enforcement information cases all in one database that we can all have access. It's going to help. In the long run, compiling these reports, because it's coming to the end of the month and gathering data from 10 different sources and trying to pull it all together, it's not exactly as accurate as it works markers. But I am looking forward to that. It does also offer graphing imagery and working ways to see, you know, the dispersion of different violations where they're at. I plan to utilize that code enforcement going forward. So next month, I'll be on the pump, on the first reports, so we can kind of get it and see.
Any questions for the city manager concerning code enforcement?
Yes. Is it possible, because I think we only have budgeted like 12 hours a month for code enforcement? Can we step that up? Can we allow, here, him, more budget, more dollars in the budget to allow four hours for code enforcement? Would you find that helpful?
Yes.
Because I know we have a lot of problems along the way. The hotels are an issue. I keep hearing about... I've seen a few of the problems. There's a lot of interior hall issues that aren't being addressed. Would it make sense?
I mean, yes, if we step up one hour, as we signed with Trump, I can give more code enforcement time. The deputy is, I think his current hourly rate is 56 an hour. I try to do as much as I can in-house as well, but we are special. Makes perfect.
Yes. What do you think? Do you want to give us a proposal? Or what do you think, time? We should talk about that?
Let me look at what I have left on that, in that budget, and then propose adjusting the hours from the end of the year.
Any other questions for City Manager Reekler on code enforcement? All right, now we're moving on to item number four, which is a presentation from the Suncoast Fire and Rescue District, but I don't see anyone here representing them. So we'll just move right on to item number five, which is the city attorney report. Attorney Nancy Meyer, you have the floor. You know, he promised us a 27-page, powerful presentation.
And I will talk to him tomorrow, I promise. The next one will be 56, 57.
Especially with all the terrible legislation that was going on. All right, any questions for the interim city attorney? No? All right, now we're on to item number six, which is the city manager report. Mr. Reekler?
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so update on our hurricane recovery. Again, I went out and I've been posting the doors of houses. I have not heard anything from. I do not have a mailing address that's different from the actual site address. I've gotten about half the responses from posting. I can just continue to follow up and update my tracking list as far as getting these substantially damaged structures reevaluated or finding what their ultimate recovery and whether they're going to, you know, demolish our platform grant or whatever they're pursuing. I'm trying to get a follow-up so that I can have that recorded. You know, we have hurricane season starting off the first of June. I expect that we're still going to be dealing with a lot of these properties throughout this hurricane season, but we have to be mindful of, you know, another season of possible threats, and the same thing could happen again. The staff is preparing for the sandbagging station, and, you know, we're going around securing everything and, you know, prepping our facilities and just making sure that we're ready for the upcoming season. Oh, I want to mention that this week I have the rest of the sod to go down in 6th Street. We did, we were supposed to do it all on the third, which was that Saturday. We were short of five pallets, so Wednesday morning, I believe, I did get a copy. So we should be all done in getting each ex of sod installed in those parks. And I'd just like to thank all the volunteers over two separate Saturdays. Each Saturday, we probably were at about $20 to $20 a volunteer. We threw it very fast, so it was an excellent project. It worked out well. We saved about half the cost. All right, the underground thing, we are working through that agreement. We were provided with the agreement that Jeff Baker, who came and spoke at the April meeting, promised us, but when we reviewed it, we noticed a lot of language was the same as our binding cost agreement that we originally signed. So I sent back our original document, asked if we do need another document. So we're waiting for the follow-up answer on that. And then we, I think we had a construction meeting on Friday. We're working through correcting our CRPP to rev up the stormwater project. The seawall at South Park is almost complete. It's actually to be done this month. And we did have the planning and zoning, the next meeting's scheduled for the 14th. I got it pushed back, and we are pulling for the 21st. Did we confirm that?
We're still waiting on a few more.
So we're having a little difficulty. We have four members, so four out of five seats filled in the planning and zoning board, and we're just having difficulty right now getting a permit for those meetings. And then the pump station signed, and we had the work session a week ago. We've been sent out the outline for the next report. We've been working in discussion with Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Elliott, and we believe that our outline is prepared. And I think everyone else on council is satisfied with the outline for the follow-up reporting for the pump station. So, yeah, we're playing on that to delivery.
Kyle, I'm not sure that I've seen this outline.
Okay, and we'll reset that, yes, okay. So, yeah, they're looking to turn that around on the two weeks that they promised. And we settled on two dates that we found historical pictures of 9th Street, and we felt that the dates of the pictures were good, you know, for just visualization to be able to explain to the residents to support what we're trying to accomplish. And then at the same time, once we had those models developed, we also want you to run some of the more severe, major, but not what you would call like a like a tropical storm event, but a major summer event, regular, and see how that would, how the pump would function in that. And that is my report.
Any other questions for City Manager Reekler? Yes, Mr. Baker?
I have a question for the city manager, not, but I spoke to Bill Miller from MWA Pumping yesterday. Contact, and just for the record, I said, when you presented this in 2023 December, I was under the impression it's going to take six months to a year to get a pump built and anything like that. He said, we're looking at 40 weeks right now. So he says, I don't want to commit to 40 weeks because it could take 45. I said, well, we couldn't have it done in maybe 35. So I said, we've been hemming and hawing on this project, you know, for a long time with a lot of different questions and everything like that. I said, if we put a purchase order in now for a pump, could we start the process? He says, well, as long as you're guaranteeing it will be an eight-inch, six-inch pump, because if you put a purchase order in for an eight-inch pump and then a change to six-inch, the whole mechanism has to be reworked. So I think council should really start walking down, if we're going to do this, then we should not go to a dump. I think the majority of the citizens want it done, and I think it needs to be done. So I just wanted to, it's not a way that city manager or issue with Eric's students, more or less, probably go to 40 weeks from now to do that pump. If you put it in there.
All right, anyone else? No? All right, before we move on to the city clerk report, I wanted to share an interesting and enlightening story about Bel Air Beach. So I got a text message the other night. A mayor somewhere else was all up in arms because the county commission mentioned a special act may occur that would encourage consolidation of beach communities in Pinellas County. And the first thing that I did was I looked, okay, what does that look like? What's a special act, first off? Was that no clue? So I did a little research and, you know, I figured it all out, and I responded back to my friend. I said, well, it still has to go to a vote, and the citizens would have to approve that if anything like that was happening. And he sent me a link to the county commission video, and he said, start watching it this time and watch it to the end. And he went as far as saying the state can create and the state can dissolve, but I don't think that that's really the case with the Florida constitution, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that they can do that without us voting to approve it. It would be whatever community was absorbing us, and we would have to also vote to approve that. And I've told several people, including county commissioners, that we would never ever do that because for the majority of the people in Bel Air Beach, we love where we live. We like the way things are, and we don't want to be like anyone else. This place is very special. So this guy down the beach is really, I could tell he was very angry about hearing this. And so I watched the video, and this county commissioner was talking about how bad things were in all the beach communities. And then he paused, and he said, except for Mayor Gaddis's community. And he said, they've got it. They're doing it right. And it was one of the proudest moments ever, not because they called my name out, but because we've got, we're not experiencing all the infighting that everyone's pretty much eaten their own after the storms. It's still going on. We've got a great city manager who took charge and made things happen, and we've got a great staff who will do anything to help the residents here. So I'd like to applaud you, city manager, for... It's rare that you hear somebody from the county bragging on Bel Air Beach, but I'm going to tell you right now, that was a really nice thing. And I did send a text message to that guy and thanked him for publicly acknowledging that we were doing things the right way. So that was really cool. All right, now we are on to the city clerk report. Kathy, you have the floor.
I have nothing to report besides what's in the report right now, so...
All right, any questions or comments for Kathy? No? All right. Now we will move on to the consent agenda, items number eight and nine. This is for approval of the April 7th, 2025 City Council meeting minutes and the April 28th, 2025 City Council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is written and presented.
Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jody Shirley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, now we are on to the regular agenda, and this is item number 10, which is consideration of appointment to the Board of Adjustments, Mr. Matt Dixon. I think Mr. Dixon is here, so he's not able to introduce himself. We'll move on to citizen comments. Would anyone like to comment on this appointment? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to appoint Matt Dixon to the Board of Adjustments. Motion is made by Todd Harper. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Anders. All right. Mr. Harper, you have the floor.
Mr. Dixon is very well qualified for position, and this is an alternate position that's allowed two openings, so the idea of filling positions and making sure that we are well-stocked. So I would vote for motion to approve Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Mr. Harper, anyone else like to comment?
Just, is he here? Asked me, you looked at what's here, I thought. You looked at what's here, I thought...
All right, this guy is more than qualified. I would like him on the board, but I always remember that one time when the person couldn't attend the meeting, and we lost the person on the galaxias.
I understand. This is for an alternate?
I understand that, but, you know, we really want to, we consider these people, whether they're here or not, like, which is, he was here last week, ready to go. Any other guy was, it was awful, the last time.
Yep, I understand, okay. All right, in that case, Kathy, would you please call her on?
Sure. Councilmember Frank Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Wellings?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Yes. All right, so it's unanimous, and you see Mr. Dixon, congratulate him and thank him for serving our city. All right, now we are on to item number eleven. This is for consideration of reappointment to Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Doug Prescott. Mr. Prescott is not here either, so would any citizen like to comment on his appointment? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to appoint Doug Prescott to the Planning and Zoning Board. Motion, which was made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Roberts. Mr. Baker, you have the floor.
No comment, he's well qualified, sir.
Any other comments? All right, in that case, Kathy, would you please call her on?
Councilmember Frank Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Wellings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Prescott, and if you see him, thank him for serving our city. All right, now we are on to consideration of authorizing the mayor and City Manager to execute an agreement with Trasc Dano LLP for City Attorney Services. Before we do that, let's go to citizens for comments. Any citizens like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to authorize for City Attorney Services. Motion. Motion made by Todd Harper. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jody Shirley. Mr. Harper, you have the floor.
I think we've had extensive experience with Trasc as the law firm for the city, and I think that they well represented as well, and they've been very, very well versed in catching the nuances of the law and the code, and helping us to rewrite the codes and manage the city. I think they were very well qualified and I would approve this.
Mr. Harper, any other comments? All right, I'm just going to do this with a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes, and it's three more years with Trasc Dano. We appreciate your services. All right, now we are on to item number thirteen, which is consideration of ordinance twenty-two zero-two, first reading. Ms. Meyer, would you please read the ordinance title?
The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, meaning our required code enforcement, Division Two Code Enforcement Procedures generally of the Bel Air Beach Code Enforcements, providing for the use of a special magistrate for code enforcement hearings, removing references to a town marshal and special master, providing for revised definitions and revised procedures, permitting to process for fine and lien reductions, providing for implementation, providing for resolution of conflicts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. I may, I'd like to point out there are two typographical errors that will be corrected by the time you receive this again, so there's no other changes. Motion goes out to you. Page eight of eleven, in paragraph D, in the second line, towards the end, has the words "up to," prosecution cost up to, the "up to" is what you're, that's no longer needed. And then on page nine, sub-paragraph C, one, the last whole line, at the end of that line, it has the word "by," required payment "by," it's going to be "of," oh, no, required payment "of," application.
All right, let's go to citizens for comments on this. Anyone like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two zero-two.
I would like to motion with amendment.
All right, motion to amend, that's made by Jody Shirley. Do we have a second? Second, second by Frank Baker. What do you have, Jody?
I think that, as I said, on page three, item B, the cross-reference on this page where we take out some definite, you know, what is a code enforcement violation, and how long do they have to resolve it? We've crossed out all the meat to that and just put it all in the discretion of the code enforcement officer. And I don't think that that's, maybe that's not what was intended, but that's the way we're going to amend it.
And so, this is your opportunity to amend the language. What is it that you would like to see?
I'm not sure why we're making changes.
I think the original reason for doing this was to remove the, all references to masters, special masters, where it's actually a special magistrate, as far as why...
That paragraph doesn't reference any of those.
Yeah, I agree. What's that?
I was going to say, right, that would be, yeah.
I think, turning more, I think, straight through the line of thirty, and I was curious if that was, because I never get the information on that, if that was a statute change? Do you not know? So would a motion be appropriate to remove all the strikeouts in B?
So?
I make that motion.
Let's see if there's a reason. I think the statute talks about reasonable time, I don't think this is a statute.
If you leave that word reasonable time, it could be a day, it could be a year.
That's where it comes in, there is discretion with your code enforcement officer, which you're hoping is happening, because when he makes that notification to somebody, they then start working together. And like, especially now with everything you've just been through, and your, you know, your city's been through, it could take some people a month to get a contractor, or get some permits done, or it takes someone many, many months. So what you're hoping for is, there's a conversation, so the reasonableness of it is based partly on that, and they can extend them and give them more time to get things done. If you have someone that's not responding to your code enforcement officer, there's a, you have thirty days, or you have forty-five days, or there's definitely an end to that if there's no working together.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Council, but if there's a violation, I'm committing, and the code enforcement officer says you need to correct this, as long as I present that, hey, I can't get a contractor, here it is, but he's not starting for thirty-five days, I'm completely within this code, and why not?
Has it since now?
No, as it since now, it's reasonable time, it could be a year from now.
But it's totally the right, your code enforcement officer's going to give them a timeframe. It's going to be on him to give the timeframe, that's why you have invented discretion, that very first line that talks about your code enforcement officer's discretion, is there a determination whether it has been violated, and then there'll be, you know, when they give that violation, there'll be a response date, there'll be some timeframe, and I apologize, I don't know your code enforcement process, and then only would be, there will be a time frame, they're not going to give them a...
Yeah, what I'm saying is, you give me, the code enforcement officer says, Frankie had five days to correct this, I take it to court and say it's not reasonable?
Well, and then it says not less than five and not more than thirty, so that's a reasonable time period, where by the end of thirty, you can say, "I engaged a contract." They won't be here for another fifteen days, but here's a copy of my contract, and, you know, you're communicating with the code enforcement officer. I think what's happening is, a lot of this is, people are violated and nothing, there's not a follow-up, there's no, or they're not, or there's just this discretion of, you know, we've had hard times, and we're trying to get through them, which I appreciate that, but it is time to start going. Okay, let's stick to our code. You should in thirty days be able to tell us what your plan is, and if you can't, then you're going to be, if there's a violation and you've got, you know, you may have to be committing for another magistrate, whatever it takes to get it solved, but something's got to be solved.
I think there's kind of a dichotomy here, because we know that there are some people that cannot get their repairs done in thirty days. But we also notice in here, this is not only within thirty days, but to correct the violation, not to begin to correct the violation. So that's a very finite window, that I think is unreasonable, especially after the storm damage we came through, but I think we need to come up with another ground here that says there is flexibility, but there is also a finite. So as an example, if the code enforcement officer engages, he goes on his code enforcement report, so therefore it's now a reported code violation, and it is being monitored and managed in the code enforcement reports to the council, is that a fair statement?
Yes, the original is going to be the first notice, which is typically a courtesy notice, or the five-day...
But something that's sitting on the code enforcement report is not going to age out, it's going to sit there, and then suddenly, when it's two hundred days old, that's going to, people are going to ask questions, so why is this still there? And then there is an opportunity for a reasonable timeframe explanation of code vendor permit, whatever that might be. But I tend to feel this is more reasonable to the individual citizen and to code enforcement based on the variability of the circumstances, than to have something as concrete and finite as this is in the current code.
So just to, as a recap, how we're functioning now, as Senator Trump, he goes out, and when he sees a violation, he starts with those five-day thornhangers, you know, the courtesy. Sometimes I do, if I'm aware of a violation, but I don't have time to go up, and I know someone's emailed, I don't know if I notify them with email, like, you know, this is always, saw this violation. From there, you know, you get like the five days, and then depending on the conversation, sometimes, you know, that courtesy notice, as soon as you get the attention of the resident, they're already correcting it, you know, that's all you need, just to even contact them. Then others, you know, you don't hear anything, and then when you're aware that, okay, they've gotten this notice, then I move forward to like a violation notice, and then at that point, I'm setting the timeline within that letter, and I've always used the code as the guideline, and I don't know where the five to thirty came from, but that was always my timetable that I stuck to, because it was in the code, and worked with that. So if I, you know, something that's going to take some time, we talked about brass, you know, give them the ax thirty days, I have one coming up, I just heard from a resident, but I've scheduled a meeting to go meet with the landscaper of that president at the property, because the thirty days has come up, but I'm not jumping on scheduling a hearing, because I feel that we can accomplish this correction through a meeting. But if I don't feel like that after that meeting, then I will schedule a hearing. But that's typically how we do it.
The former statute doesn't give a specific timeframe, it does talk about code inspectors shall notify the violator and give him or her reasonable time to correct their violation. Should the violation continue beyond the time specified for correction, code inspectors shall notify enforcement or, if it's a special magistrate, that's who you use. That would be the process that he was just explaining. So even though this, the thickness of five days and maximum thirty days may not, may no one repeat in the code, you can still decide to use that timeframe. This doesn't take that away from you, you're just giving someone the same process, she wants the same process, she wants to get a notice and time to cure, and then let them know what that timeframe is, and then if they don't follow that, then obviously they will, they'll get the violation.
So did this come from our code review, or is this the attorney's suggestion?
So it was always in the code, well, at least since I started, and then when we did the review, it got stripped through.
So our A and C committee?
No, on the, on the, I can't remember the attorney that worked on this, I think it was Eric, I can't remember her last name.
Jell-O, Eric Jell-O.
Yes. She, you know, revised this, and in the process, when Attorney Moore brought it to the work session, it had the strike through, and then I realized it, and I meant to ask him my, and my assumption was it's something to do with the statute, but I do not.
The new language tracks the statute.
Okay.
There's nothing in for the statute that gives the, like, less than five days or up to nine, it's going to be thirty days. Yet your procedures, as long as you're justified, is reasonable, and the time you're giving them, you can use whatever timeframe.
And I have no objection to having the time, I mean, it is, you know, you're setting a set amount of time that you'd like to see code enforcement done within, so it's a parameter that you can operate.
But I'm also scared, the good point is made, the way it's written now, if you were just to put that timeframe back in, you're not giving them time to work with the, with the code enforcement, because you're saying that you have to have it corrected, which some things can be corrected, you need to learn along, you can do that, maybe, this is my day, this is my situation.
Yeah, I understand this.
So I think if, I don't, I would not recommend putting the actual number, numbers back in there, like I said, the reasonable time is following your code, your city can obviously use the timeframe that it's been using, it's not a problem with that, but if you do want to put a specific timeframe back in there, you need to report other part of that, because you don't want to limit people to thirty days to correct a violation, they can keep to that, or setting them up to fail, or something like that.
Jody Shirley, what's your opinion on this?
Well, I'm just, I'm going to say, do we have the procedures in our code somewhere that tells us that we have some timeframes for, you know, what, it says, okay, you have thirty days to cure, if you're not cured in thirty days, with reasonable explanation, we'll give you another thirty days, and we have something like that in our code that we can fall back on, because if not, no one has to correct anything.
Well, there are stepping stones, really, you have to have something built in a certain amount of time, everything that you're currently trying to fix in six months.
Well, you know, I have a pool next door that was supposed to be built two years, and I'm going on three and a half years, and the pool's still damn deep, full of mosquito, you know, inhabitants, so it's a problem. It's not, we are doing a horrible job with the code enforcement.
But what, just using that pool, what would this coordinate if it was changed tonight or not?
Well, I think it would give them a little more meat, I don't know, again...
Because this is an effective...
But why aren't we changing it, right? We already been using the tools we have right now, why are we changing them?
You're tracking, you're not tracking the full statute. The new language tracks the full statute, because again, your code enforcement officer will give reasonable notice, depending on what the circumstance is. If they don't meet that reasonable notice, then it's on your code enforcement officer to issue their ultimate, or notify your special magistrate, however your process is set up, to notify the special magistrate, they didn't give the time, they haven't done it, we're ready to appear. So if that part's not happening, it's not because of the code, it's having that process set up correctly to...
But if we don't have it in our code, we don't enforce it, we can enforce something?
Yes, yes, we're, the Florida statute announces a new language in your code, since as long as it's reasonable, you can enforce it. So the question would be, let's say you gave someone thirty days to fix a broken window, the window's broken on the house, you can't have that.
It's a violation of the house.
So let's say, code enforcement gave, that, hey, please fix this, you have thirty days, thirty days, comes to go, nothing happens, no conversation, they take you to the special magistrate, they want to argue if it was unreasonable, that's on them to bring that argument, and the, you know, the code enforcement to say, this is what happened, I gave them notice, they didn't contact me, you know, we haven't, no one's asked to work with us, no one's talked to me, so that could be a good decision that's made, obviously, to whether that's reasonable, they want to see you in court, question who was reasonable, if it's factual. So what were the facts, what happened? Let's say you give someone thirty days, and they, you know, the roof came off, and that's what it takes for them to do it, and we all know it's going to take around thirty days, would that be reasonable? No. So it's going to be very fact specific, but the statute, the statute, I assume, reads that way, it needs to be reasonable the situation we're in. So if your code tracks that statute, you're fine, as long as whoever is issuing these notices is acting reasonably, which, no doubt that your code enforcement officer...
Or your...
And then that's the thing, again, so if they give them thirty days or forty-five days, and no action's been taken, then the next step needs to happen, and that would be to tell them all to push forward versus changing your code, because that's already there, the procedure's there, the law lets it, lets it happen, and your code tells you, once it's reasonable, if they don't comply, to give them to a special magistrate.
Right. So my question is, is do you want to amend the language, or would you like to retract?
I will retract my amendment based on legal advice.
Okay.
That works. That we're tracking what the city, I mean, what the state of Florida requires rather than hazardably making changes to our code.
Okay, all right, great. So I will go back to the original motion, I mean, a motion to approve this ordinance.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion's made by Todd Harper. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Honored. Okay, second by Councilmember Welling. We're going to have to take it to a vote. Before we do that, would anyone else like to comment on this ordinance? No? All right. Kathy, if you don't mind, would you please come and roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Andres Willings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye. So the ordinance passes first reading unanimously and we will vote on it again next month. All right, now we are on to item number 14. This is for authorization to provide a one-month credit to each slip runner who was affected by the recent extended power loss at the Marina. City Manager Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I brought this to the last work session we had, summarized some of the claims or requests for refunds from a handful of the slip runners and was asked to make a recommendation at the next council meeting for what we would like to offer to the slip runners for the time down of the electrical issues that they were incurred at the Marina. And I feel in looking at the 18 renters and, you know, the boats they have, all the slip sizes and boats and situations, that I think the best course of action was to do a straight one-month credit, regardless if they have a lift, if, you know, a sailboat, because, I mean, we don't know everybody's specific situation of what they had to go through with the hurricane, but we know everyone had to go through it. So our recommendation would be one-month credit for each slip. And I summed up what that would total and it comes to $5,748. So it's a pretty significant credit for the city to give back, but I think that it's something that we can do to help compensate for the problems we've incurred at the Marina.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Before we get to the council, would anyone like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are closed again. Council, I'm gonna need a motion to approve a new one-month credit for slip runners affected by the recent extended power losses at the Marina. I'm asking for a motion. Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Roberts. Mr. Banker, you have the floor. I think the proposal was more than reasonable and I think we'll vote. Thank you, Mr. Banker. Do we have any other comments? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
The last meeting we had at workshop, there was, I think, a couple of clouds that had designated, they thought they were without use for two months. So how do we think that's gonna work out?
So the type that the power was down was just short of two months. I believe, I can't remember if I did have a request for two months. We have one of, like several ones, yeah, it was quite different. I, in my opinion, that I feel like we're making an attempt to offer a credit back to each slip runner and it may not be the full credit, but I think we can.
I just, I wanna say, I think Kyle's being very generous. My opinion is, they shouldn't get any credit back. Being a boat owner, a homeowner on dock, there was a lot of damage that I had to absorb and that's just part of, you know, that's part of the consequences of the event, right?
Yeah.
And for the city to have to absorb that or the other residents who don't use those stocks to absorb it, I think is not right, but I'll support Kyle on whatever he decides to do.
Julie? I hate that we have to do this just because anybody that actually has their own, they went through this very same thing. They had to rip out everything and start over. I think that City Manager is being very, very generous by doing this and I will vote for this provided that in a future work session, we discuss what our level of commitment is on these, the pedestals, the power, everything, because there are so many variables. Whenever the slip runner owns electrical hardware, it's sitting out the water, there's wiring coming in, it's going over that pedestal, and these are things that we don't have any control over. So it could very well be that somebody's lift may have caused some of the damage. I just don't know. But what I think is that if going forward, this should be using your own risk. And if Mother Nature does, God forbid, what she did to us last year, I don't think we should be responsible for that damage. Yes, we'll get it fixed, but I don't think that we should be paying for an inconvenience. So that's my two cents on it. Do you have a second?
I feel that in this circumstance, the city is the landlord and the city has a role and a responsibility to provide accommodations that were rented. And I think that at the same time, that the renter should have, there's a level of accommodation working with a landlord renter situation. So I think that if I paid rent in and did not get the service I paid for, then I think we have some obligation to offer some level of it.
Well, the boat lift is not part of that obligation. We do not own those lifts frequently. In fact, there, many of them have been passed on from owner to owner. I mean, we don't really know what condition they're in. So there's just so many variables that put us at risk if we're going to assume all responsibility for a malfunction.
So I would say that if we are to assume all responsibility, then there should be a level of standard within the boat lifts that we are stepping into, we know we're walking into, at the same time that we are affording that opportunity to the owners to make right decisions as well. I don't have a problem, I did giving owners a summer leave because no matter whether it was $240 or $510, whatever monthly, because they still wrote that check to the city for the use of that space, whether we bought the lift or they bought it.
And that money was used to help repair, you get the damage, so...
And their boat didn't have to be removed. Their boat was still safe in that slip. Now, they may not have been able to move it up and down or whatever, but they could have put a generator out there. Maybe the lift didn't even work. Maybe it was their GFI that blew the system. Who knows?
I agree with all, I agree with all the statements and I think to the mayor's point, I think we should have some level of standards or procedures moving forward, but in this circumstance, we did not and I think we have some obligation.
And I think the City Manager's offering is more than fair, considering the circumstances. Any other comments on this topic, Mr. Banker?
Well, it almost had me wanting to pull my notion because this wasn't really discussed that much at the work session when we were discussing this. And I went home, I was thinking, well, we're gonna get relieved, maybe we should get relieved to everyone that couldn't use trash paper, you know, and still can't use trash paper. You know, it's not their fault, I mean, and they can't get it in their house. So, Mr. Shirley really got the... No, I mean, I feel bad because like Mr. Harper said, you know, we're like, we are the landlord, but we aren't the landlord, he has his third lift. And I agree with you, you could have brought one of those little 1,000-watt generators that probably did, I don't know how many amps of lift required, probably just five.
Mr. Roberts? I was gonna ask that, so the lift may have been in operation. We just weren't able to provide the power.
Right.
That's a situation, possibly, yeah. So I could see that versus saying, you know, I don't have any control over the power coming to the lift, that's part of the city's...
But then the lift may not have worked either.
Correct, could be.
Yeah.
But I know my lift worked if I had power, but I don't have power. So I appreciate the fact that you're gonna give me an option because it really wasn't mine, but it could have been, I mean, because maybe my lift got destroyed. But, yeah, usually they're very sensitive.
All right, have we discussed this enough? Can we take a vote on it? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Reefer, you're authorized to proceed.
Thank you.
All right, now we are on to item number 15. This is authorization to order a survey of the actual Boulevard. City Manager Reefer?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is down at Bay Shore Boulevard, over by Morgan Drive. And the survey, the initial order of the survey was because, I mentioned earlier, we have a large span, could be about 78 feet of curb that's holding water, it's sunk over time and it's an area that's gradually gotten worse. The city has tried to remedy it in economical ways by drilling up, you know, some holes to help the water reach through the curb and drain out of there. It was working for a little to buy the city some more time, but with the development of a house on that vacant lot that was there, it has produced more water and created a worse situation where it's actually filling the curb and flooding onto the street. So again, the situation's gotten worse out there, so that's the reason for ordering the survey. When we priced out the cost of a section of Bay Shore versus the whole Boulevard, it made sense to do the whole thing. So we've got two proposals. One was significantly more, Southeastern Survey and Mapping, of course, they're a good surveying company, but they're typically the larger jobs, so they remember a higher price. George A. Schimpf and Associates is second. That's a, if you haven't heard of them in this area, it's a very well-known surveying company and they've provided a proposal to do all Bay Shore Boulevard for $8,000. And my recommendation is that we execute a purchase order to have this done.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. All right, citizens, last opportunity because this is the last agenda item you can speak on. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to authorize this survey. Motion. Motion is made by Todd Harper. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I'm gonna give that one to Andres. Mr. Harper, you have the floor. I'll speak towards the motion, the motion that's presented. Other comments? No? All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we are on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? All right, now we're on to item 17, which is council comments. We're gonna start with Councilmember Welling.
I have yours.
You're good at that. Councilmember Shirley?
Just, you know, thanks everyone who has attended the meeting. Thank the two girls who applied for the opposition. Hopefully we can move that forward and make some decisions quickly. And thank you to all our staff members for everything they're doing. I just hope that we could focus more on code enforcement and getting our neighborhoods back to normal. And I would love more than anything to see our community cleaned up. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
I think that your comment earlier about the Penos County Commission meeting and the comment about calling out Beller Beach was well-founded. I speak to lots of neighbors and residents in other cities around the area, still sometimes feel like you're driving to a war zone in certain areas. So I can always speak the highest praise that the unit that we call City of Beller Beach works very well and has a good reputation and I thank you everybody for that.
All right, let's see, now we're on to Councilmember Banker.
I'm gonna go on to what you were speaking about at the sheriff's presentation. I, people, let's say, lawyer, but are residents of the area, sitting or constantly sleeping on our benches. And I brought this up last year, it was right after that hardware, that Captain Ray incident in Rock Beach. And as the deputy says, if they're not doing anything, they're illegal, you can't do anything about it, you can't even ask them for their name. And I brought this up at the Beller Shores meeting too, earlier this year, and they just passed the camping ordinance. Now, we were gonna look at the camping ordinance late last year, but knowing that hit with the storm, so everything else got put on the back burner, but I really believe we should address that in an upcoming work session.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. Vice Mayor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't think we can say this enough regarding the, I remember when Kyle came to the workshop and was talking about the side jobs that we needed to be done at our different parking areas. And we were talking about different avenues to pursue funding or do budget transfers. And somehow we came to be that, well, let's go ahead and ask for help from our citizens. And it doesn't surprise me. I mean, the number that we heard immediately were like 23, 24. We started with 19th Street. And I think a lot of kudos to the citizens of our city because I don't even know how they, we put information out there, but they responded so quickly and so many people to get it done. And it saved the city money, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it wasn't a few dollars, it was fairly significant. And I think people had fun. We still got a little bit to do. I did not get to participate. Both weekends I had something going on out of town. But when is the next?
Wednesday morning at 8:00.
Wednesday morning at 8:00. And we're at 6th Street?
6th Street.
Okay. But again, kudos to the citizens for stepping up and saying, hey, we'd like to do this, it's gonna make the city look better. I'm guessing they probably had a good time participating, yeah. And it was done quickly. Thank you.
49 man's on each.
Yeah, that was amazing. I have so pretty cool stuff.
I don't wanna interfere with it, but the kudos really goes out to the fire department and RW's. They're all were out there helping. Very nice, very nice. All right, anything else, Mr. Roberts? Okay. I kinda said what I wanted to say earlier whenever I was interrupting the City Manager, so that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. All right, good night, everyone.